I'd like to call the regular meeting of the City Council of April 15th to order. Connie, would you like to lead us in?
I'll be happy to. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call. Councilmember Hawkins, here. Plummer, here. Sutch, here. Williams, here. Mayor Garavent, here. City Administrator Miller is here. Deputy City Attorney Mubie Goldstein is here. Acting City Engineer, that's you, Jerry. Wake up, Jerry. Fire Chief, here. Police Chief, here. Administrative Services Director, here. And Community Development Director, here. While everyone's present, I'll account it for Mr. Mayor. Okay, thank you. Item E, City Clerk's Report on Agenda Posting.
At 1:30 on the 12th of April, the agenda was posted for public view.
Okay. Item C is the full agenda. Is there any additions, corrections, attractions? Seeing none, we will move on to presentations. Number one is Gerard Pacillo. Oh, and it's spelled incorrectly on the agenda.
Oh, yeah. Sorry about that, Jerry.
It's Gerard, not Gerald. Pacillo, City Engineer for 40 years of service. Now, I'm looking over a copy of the meeting minutes of April 16th, 1979, and, um, long agenda, actually, a whole bunch of items.
Should you vote?
What's that? I wasn't gonna go there. But, um, Councilmember Leslie made the motion, and Ronnie Stern made the second, to employ GJEF Engineering to do city service, engineering city, ah, sorry, to do the city engineering services on a retainer basis of $300 a month. Is that what we're still paying you, Jerry?
A little bit more.
Okay. Effective April 16th, 1979. Subject to acceptance by GJEF Engineering, which I obviously did, and we want to have a plaque here and want to give to you for your 40 years of service as a city engineer for the City of Sonora.
Relax, relax, three minutes.
Give us five, we'll see. Give us five.
Yeah, I wanted to note that I was on, I became a city engineer on three to two votes. And I stayed for 40 years, so I must be doing something right. During those times, 1979, it was a little wilder in here as far as the City Council up here. Council chambers was, that's why they have two doors here. There was a solid wall between the two doors, walls, and, uh, this there was the, it was the same level, and they had these chairs in here. They were chrome and, like, chrome lounge chairs with purple seating, and they were side by side, and they had an ashtray. And everybody smoked in here. It was like a smoke pill. And I've seen, in the 40 years, we've seen the same issues come back and forth, everything. The main issues then were parking. Like, do we have enough parking? Do we don't have enough parking? And, uh, I was tasked by, in the early 80s, I've got in my office a plan, a parking plan of almost every vacant lot in downtown, and that was done at the request of the city. So, "Take a look at this lot, how many spaces can we fit here?" They were very proactive with parking, and you had the SABA, Sonora Area Business Association, would come in, and they would even police their own parking. And, uh, the, we used to have beavers in town, came out '82, and then some of the businesses would park in front of their business, and they would get, was it a pop, uh, Hudson? And they would get a note from Pop Hudson, "We don't park here." So, uh, we would always have these complaints that, "Oh, we need more parking, we need more parking." So, I think it was in '82, we actually formed a parking and business improvement area so that you could, we could build parking facilities and then assess the businesses for them. And one of the first jobs was that, uh, one of the double-decked post office parking lot, that parking lot there at Shepherd Stew at Lion Street. They wanted to do it, so we did. Like, Plummer, we designed it and everything, and we came up with a, with a cost, and it was like, oh, 50 spaces, it was a half a million dollars, everything. So, we brought that to the meeting, and after that, we didn't have a parking problem. Thank you.
Oh, you bet. All right, good, Jerry. Okay, the presentation's item number two is introductions of community service volunteer and explorers. I'm going to get to Chief, or is it going to be Sergeant? Sergeant, words.
Thank you very much, Honorable Mayor and City Council Members. My name is Tim Wards, I'm the Sergeant of the Police Department. I work for this wonderful man, Torevanderwill. And today, we're going to present our explorer group. There is no action required on this item. The background on our explorer post is word of floor post 364. And we accept explorers throughout the year, and when they achieve a six-month area in their, we'll call it a career with us, then they get to be actually badge members of the explorer post. We have six of them, and I'll just call them out one by one, but we'll start with the community service volunteer who was an explorer for us, Kirk Bryant, if you can come in here. So Kirk Bryant joined the explorers in October 2017. He initially joined the explorer post to learn how he could assist motorists who have been involved in motor vehicle accidents throughout our area. As Kirk continued with his learning, the duties of the explorers, he began to realize there was more to the program that he enjoyed and wanted to follow in his brother's footsteps. His brother was a Explorer of the Year in 2013, and Kirk just recently aged out of our explorer program, which is 21, and now he wants to be a volunteer for us, which we really appreciate. Our volunteers do a lot of work for us, and I hope he looks forward to working a lot for us. So, yeah, I would like to bring Kirk on with us, and today is his badge pinning ceremony, so I really appreciate it. And we have new advisors in our explorer post. Ashley Brandow, Officer Ashley Brandow, and Thomas Brickley are helping us out in our explorer and CSB program, and they'll be doing a great job for us, I am sure. Just let me back here so we can take a picture. Uh, next one is Catherine Campbell. Catherine Campbell is a student at Columbia College and has set her goals in herself to earn a bachelor's degree in criminal justice eventually. In her junior and senior years of high school, at Somerville High School, Catherine participated in the school's law enforcement class, which introduced her to the explorer program. Catherine joined the explorer program to gain experience in the police service and work with the community. She feels she has gained experience and confidence to become a police officer in the near future. After college, she looks forward to continuing with Sonora Police Explorer Program. And if you notice on our badges that we're pinning them today, it's kind of a respect to a fallen officer, that was a CHP Officer Sergeant down in Southern California that got killed by a head drug driver, so that's why the blue line. Next one will be Haley Camp. Haley joined the Sonora Police Department Explorer Program to learn what it's like to be a police officer. She wants to push herself to be stronger mentally and physically, and wants to become a police officer in the future. Haley prides herself in being honest and always doing the right thing. Haley sees herself being a strong police officer, helping others, and giving back to her community. One of the goals is to show people that an officer is much more than a man or a woman with a gun. It is someone who can help and someone who will truly do the right thing, even when no one is looking. She wants to be an explorer because she is truly devoted to becoming a police officer. Next one is Andrew Macias. Andrew is 15 years old and has wanted to be a police officer since he was little. He wants to follow in his grandfather's footsteps, who I know, and be a, who was a deputy sheriff and a detective with Tuolumne County Sheriff's Office. His grandfather inspired him to become an officer. Andrew's mom also had a 21 career, 21-year career with Tuolumne County Sheriff's Office, which enabled him to become connected with law enforcement officers in the county. Andrew enjoys his service with the explorers and is looking to continue his experience with the explorers as long as he can. Erica McCutcheon. Erica is 14, Erica is 14 years old and has been living in Tuolumne County for five years. She is involved in the FFA and enjoys showing pigs. She enjoys being outdoors, riding motorcycles, and playing sports. Erica joined the explorers to see the path she wants to take with her life. She would like to someday join the FBI and handle complex cases. She plans to join the military for four years and would like to attend the police academy to start her career. She has learned a lot in her six months in the explorer program, such as handcuffing traffic stops and using the wrap restraint device, along with many other great experiences. She looks to make many more memories in this program. Last but not least, Julian Petty. Came by as far as our tallest explorer we've ever had. Julian is originally from Florida. He attends Somerville High School and also attends the law enforcement class out there. Julian enjoys hanging out with his friends, hiking, and playing airsoft. Julian joined the explorer program about 11 months ago because he loves the, loves to give back to his community. Julian loves helping as many people as he can. He also hopes to gain as much experience and training before he goes to a police academy on his own after he completes high school. He just told me the other day he's gonna go sign up for the military and be down for us for a little while, so that's coming up, pretty sure, after high school. Possibly, he's done very good. Thank you very much. Our explorer program has grown quite a bit, especially recently, so we really appreciate all the work they do. We have 10 explorers now, and they do a lot of work for us, and the CSB also, so thank you.
Thank you guys very, very much for what you do.
Ah, okay. Give them one hope for the future.
Yeah.
What a great bunch of people.
Okay, item E, Public Comment on Non-Agenda Items. The public may address the council on any item of public interest, not otherwise on the agenda that is within the jurisdiction of the city. No action may be taken. Matters to be addressed may be referred to city staff or placed on a subsequent meeting agenda. Speakers are limited to a five-minute presentation. Is there anyone that would like to speak for public comment? Seeing none, we will go to item F, which is Consent Calendar. Items on the consent calendar are considered routine and will be carried on in one motion unless the council member or member of the public has a question or wishes to discuss an item. In that case, the item will be removed from the consent calendar and considered separately. And the items on the consent calendar are the, one, the following meeting minutes. The City Council Study Session Meeting of April 1st, the City Council Open Session Meeting of May, or April 1st, two, the approval of prepaid order invoices of previously budgeted expenses on April 16th, 2019, and item three is approval of disbursements in the amount of $135,546.90 on April 12th, 2019, for payroll inclusive of employee salaries, employer and employee taxes, and retirement contributions, and miscellaneous voluntary employment important deductions. Are there, is there any items that council members want to pull?
Go ahead.
Um, I would like to pull the minutes, please.
Of which, which minutes?
Oh, I'm sorry, the open session of pay buffers.
And that was the same thing I was going to do.
Okay, okay. Is there any other, well, pull that item. Is there any other items to pull? I open up for public discussion on the remainder of the consent agenda. Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council for a vote, or for a motion, rather. So, Councilmember Williams moved on the remainder of the consent calendar minus item 1A, 1B, rather, 1B, and Councilmember Second, is there?
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, who was the motion in the second?
Uh, the motion was by Councilmember Williams, and the second is by Councilmember Plummer. Did I miss that? Okay, brought it back to the council for vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, motion passes. I'll go back to the item 1A, or rather, 1B of the open session meeting minutes of April 1st.
On page four, the, the council member signed consensus, there were four things listed, and I'm wondering if number five should have been included, which would be to remove one parking space south of City Hall, south of the City Hall crosswalk on the east side of Washington Street. I think we all agreed to that as well.
Out front of, um, the, uh, the front of the, uh...
We were just gonna do that.
Oh, okay.
Well, there's a process, 'cause it's state highway, but we can make note of that. It wasn't, it wasn't directly relevant to the project, so it wasn't a, maybe it was talked about, but it wasn't one of the four items for the Red Church Project.
Okay.
So, do you want it in there or not?
I would like it in there.
Okay, sure.
And Connie, is that your only?
That's it.
Okay, Collette, did you have something?
Um, yes, on page three, Sharon Maravich's comments. She also, there's, she also spoke about, um, that Caltrans has staff that specialize in historic districts.
I don't know that. I mean, I guess so. So, these are not verbatim minutes?
Well, I'd like, I would like that recorded in the minutes, though I thought that was a really important point. I'll be happy to go watch it again and tell you what she said.
Oh, I, I just got, I just got the recording, we could look at it. So, what is it that you'd like to add?
She said that she just suggested that in these kinds of projects that we also involve Caltrans staff that specialize in historic districts, and I think that would be really helpful for us and would help us not proceed along, um, in a way that we maybe don't want to, that we later choose not to. So, and she said it was in District 10 has, which is our district, has one, as I remember, but that's all I remember.
Yeah, they normally get engaged through the environmental review process, and they are engaged in the transit project in terms of the aesthetics of services being proposed. The difference is the environmental review was done in advance of Caltrans being involved in this project, so.
It just would be helpful, I think.
Okay, well, let I have that right first.
Yeah.
Is there any other things I, no?
Um, I, I just have one, this is actually a question. Oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Um, we didn't make a motion. Was that intentional?
Yes.
It was not a motion?
It was not a motion.
It was just a consensus.
Because it was, it was for discussion and direction, not action.
But it was originally an action item, was it not?
No. It was listed for discussion and direction.
Okay, all right. That's it.
Okay. Seeing no further amendments, I will entertain a motion on these minutes.
Moved to, moved to approve.
Same.
Okay, so moved by Mayor Platoon Hawkins and seconded by Councilmember Williams to approve the meeting minutes as corrective or amended, rather. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously.
And that was Hawkins and Williams.
Yes. Okay. Item G is unfinished business, there is none. Item H is public hearings, and there are none. Item I is new business. Item one is presentation by Lisa Mayo, President and Chief Executive Officer of the Tuolumne County Visitors Bureau on the 2019, 2020 preliminary budget and marketing plan.
Thank you, good evening, and thank you for having us here tonight. So, our, one of my good times, go through our two-year budget that you have in front of you, and just see if you have any questions, and we'll give some highlights. I have Jen Botes, who's our Marketing Manager with us tonight, as well as Katie Kirkland, our Communications and Doors Manager, and I'm gonna let them talk about their parts of the budget. But a couple things I just wanted to touch on. We have a, a line item called Partnership Co-ops, and I just wanted to explain what that was. And that's when we have something that we do, like, we take out a section of the San Francisco Chronicle, and we put money outwards in and pay to play, so partners, some of our members, or other partners in the community would pay that, would pay that portion of it. So, that's just reflecting, we put that in the budget. And then with TOT, you might see that we kept it fairly flat. We are obviously not through this year yet, so we're not really sure what to compare to, to gauge that, but we feel that we're being conservative, and we'd rather be conservative than, than over budget what we feel will come in on the TOT side. We are in the county, at the county, we are expecting a significant income in a couple of years, probably a year and a half to two years worth of some new properties that are coming online, and so you'll see that reflected in there as well. And on the expense side, I also wanted to let you know what is included under payroll. It includes salaries, wages, medical benefits, bookkeeping services, payroll, taxes, and workers' comp. And we have a larger-than-normal increase from 2019, 2020 to 20, 2021, to allow for the current part-time position that we have to hopefully go full-time, and also, we have to keep up with the minimum wage increases, and so that's something that we're looking at to as we budget ahead. So, with that, I'm gonna bring Jen up to talk about some of the items highlighted in the marketing, and then to end with, we keep questions.
Good evening, thank you. So, just really quickly to talk about the marketing portion of the budget, I'll just give a quick overview of what now entails. Pretty much the marketing portion is print advertising in publications such as, in the newspaper takeovers that Lisa just mentioned. It's internet advertising, social media, television and radio advertising and programming, leisure travel shows, and also our vacation planner and website, just to give a brief overview of that. I'll also quickly give highlights of the upcoming marketing plan and budget. So, this year and in the upcoming years, we're going to be putting an emphasis on sustainability and sustainable and responsible visitation and travel to Tuolumne County. This is becoming increasingly important as we are getting more and more visitors, and it's, it's, uh, what we would like to do is include all of our partners and members of the community in this as much as they would like to, to highlight some of their own sustainable practices as well. But also, we would like to further develop our Tuolumne County To Cool to Trash campaign, which we kicked off in January when we were handing out trash bags at the Yosemite entrance gate to visitors going into Yosemite during the government shutdown. So, that's part of that as well. And also, Visit California, essentially the Visitors Bureau for the State of California is rolling out their own sustainability program this year, and we look forward to utilizing some of their tools to help us in our own, in our own efforts as well. I'll also talk a little bit more about something else with Visit California, is that we are finding that when we do advertise on VisitCalifornia.com, their website, or respond to their e-newsletters that they send out to their, to their databases, that we really see a very good return on those advertisements. And when we do have those, have those campaigns engaged, we're seeing a significant increase in vacation planner requests and people signing up for our own e-newsletters. So, it's very, very beneficial, and we also, VisitCalifornia.com is second in the referrals to our website after Facebook, being first. And also, with Visit California, just one more thing, is that as we are in alignment more and more with them, is that we're, they come to us more often to ask us if we would like to host familiarization tours, which I think he's gonna talk about here in just a minute, but, and other opportunities to partner with them, which just, it gives us more leverage on our investment with them. The next that I will highlight, the next item is video for digital content creation and specifically video development. I was at a Tourism Tech Summit just three weeks ago, and with all of these conferences and shows that we go to, we, video was always emphasized on, it's just going to become more and more important, especially in our industry. According to Think, Think with Google, 66% of people view videos when they're planning a trip. And we, when we're putting our videos on social media, we're seeing very good engagement with those as, as well. And video is really great because it's this tool that it can, and comes with a lot of expenses, all in one, one place, and you see and you hear, and you, we can show excited people, and so it's a really, a really great tool to use that we'll be leveraging more and more. And then finally, research, just for a moment. We did have a line item for our budget this current year to do research, which is a significant cost. However, with the light of Tourism Recovery after the fires, those funds were shifted to be utilized to other places for recovery efforts, and so we do have... to be utilized to other places for our recovery efforts, and so we do have that in our budget for later in the future. And now I'll turn to Katie, I want to ask you some questions.
Let's see if there's any questions for you specifically. Is there any questions for Chandler? Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Good evening. So to highlight the Public Relations section of the budget, which is working with media to develop relationships and get them familiar with Tuolumne County by arranging and coordinating media trips. It's super important for the media to get a firsthand experience of Tuolumne County. It just adds some credibility and value to their publications. So as you can see, there's a notable increase in the Public Relations budget. This is to allow us to continue to work with international and domestic media, including Black Diamond, which is the PR and travel trade company that represents us in the UK. It also allows us to work with international media. It's super important that working with international media, because international guests stay longer in a destination and spend more money in the destination. And then we've also increased our presence with Visit California, as Jen said. And so they have really been inviting us to be part of a familiarization tour. We have one coming up, actually, it's a Gold Rush fam, so they'll be getting some groups of media in town and spending some time in downtown as well. Our media focus will include social campaigns to target millennials and millennials, which is a millennial parent, a term, a new term we learned about, a new market. We learned about them at the 2019 Visit California Outlet Forum. And then top-tier media and group media tours, like the Black Diamond UK fam tour that we had this past September, where the group visited for four days, maybe two or three days in downtown Sonora with overnight stays. The next section I would like to highlight is the Travel Trade section. This includes working with travel agents and tour operators, airline representatives, to develop partnerships and increase group travel to Tuolumne County. So the increase in the Travel Trade portion of the budget is increase, we've added an increase to partnerships with advertising with travel trade companies, familiarization tours to train travel agents, just like the fam, the French fam that we had. It was a group of twenty-four travel agents from France, from France, who came to Tuolumne County for a day, and they spent the whole afternoon in downtown Sonora and did an overnight stay and dinner. So I don't know if any of you saw them running around town speaking French, it was pretty cool. And then, also, but kind of doesn't fall under the Travel Trade budget, but it's incorporated to Travel Trade, we're planning a film familiarization tour as well. So we'll be inviting film agencies and producers to come to the area to get familiar with it in the filming locations too. So Travel Trade will focus on international travel markets, and then also meeting planners focusing on regional opportunities, and an emphasis on highlighting unique meeting spaces and maybe get off the travel. So any questions on those sections?
Any questions for Kate?
So the fam tour for the film, has that been set yet?
We're looking for during fall time, so it's all pink, so then the colors and everything are really gorgeous. So it'll give them a nice overview of what Tuolumne County's like.
Question.
Any other questions? Thank you, I'm going to pack my bags and leave, so wrap it up. And that's it?
That's wrap, whatever.
Are there any questions for me?
Yes. So during that timeframe that you've had somebody that's been reaching out to the film, what are you experiencing? Is there interest?
There is interest in filming. I think it's a lot more challenging environment than it used to be, because while we have wonderful authentic locations, so much can be done digitally, so I think that that's kind of an angle that we have to crack. With our film liaison, she has been being film liaisons in California statewide meetings, and they have workshops, things like that, so that she can learn more, network more. We do get every now and again from the California Film Commission, we'll have something come across asking for a specific look or feel, and we always answer anything that we feel isn't even close to what they're looking for. We do find out sometimes after the fact that things have filmed, and they kind of go under the radar, which is unfortunate, because there should be filming permits being taken out, which helps us to know exactly what's going on. But I do feel like we will have some more things. I know Bethany has worked with some, a couple of large movies that actually they ended up going elsewhere, but she made some good contacts, so.
But the budget has an increase for film, is there a reason for that?
There's nothing, there's not really any. The things that we have budgeted are like the order, like key creative handbook for the industry. The, I mean, the things that we're doing are basically what we can do. You know, the fam tour is something different that we have not done, at least not since in the last seven years or so. I don't know if there was, I think there was one in the past way back. But I think that's something that could be effective, an effective use of the budget, for sure.
I just, a couple of things. Once, one, I just want to say that I reviewed this budget, and I marked it up with all kinds of questions, and then I turned the page and read her. You answered almost all of my questions, so that was actually sort of, that was lovely. I just have a question about Black Diamond, and I know that you pooled your return on, your research on return on investment last year because of the fire. But I understand that international tourists perhaps stay longer and spend more money, but has that really brought in more, that a significant number of international tourists?
So this last year was the first year that we've had Black Diamond, and our investment with them is forty-five thousand dollars. And the, I can't remember if Katie might have some of the full return on investment dollars this last year, just in the media side of it, but it was like something like three hundred thousand dollars that we received at media. Now, as far as like journalists writing about it over there, like we were in Cosmopolitan magazine, UK. I mean, there's some really great pieces that we were in. So really, we have to do a survey with tells to see, you know, is our UK travel sector, is that rising, is it, you know, greater than it has been? So, because people don't come to the visitor, we want everybody to visit through, come to the visitor center, because they just don't do that. But we feel that this is something that, I always say three years, when you're investing is something to let it go for three years to see the return. So I think we have yet to see it, but Jen does regular surveys with our members too, and that's one of the questions that she has on there.
Thanks. Just a comment like I had last year was, you know, I've had people that live in my home state of Virginia, and they're, hey, is this, this is where you live, right? You know, so the marketing is working. You know, of course, a lot of people are going to see it, not as many are going to come, but the word's out there, so, good job.
Thank you.
You want to ask?
I have one more question. So when I look at this back page, it states that the TOT tax for the city is four hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars. But I don't see that when I look at the budget. Why is that?
Well, because our budget is on a fiscal year, and this is for the year, so that I believe is where the difference would be.
So, so we had one peak year that was about that amount, on a fiscal basis. Our TOT is generally something over four hundred thousand dollars. I certainly hope that you guys, that we were able to pay you what you projected in your 2019, 2020, and 2021 budgets, because that would mean the city's TOT would be five hundred and forty thousand, six hundred thousand, which are amounts that we've not reached before. But if you can bring more people in and generate those kind of amounts, then we all share what, you know, the return on all that, so. But that does, that is higher than our highest year to date, by some considerable amount.
That's a perfect segue in my question. It's almost embarrassing to throw a bean counter hat, when I believe that you are doing a great job, and I'd love for you to tell us the return on investment in the way of vernishing the, you know.
So there's another report you're going to get in August, after the end of the fiscal year. That's generally where they summarize what their accomplishments are.
Cool.
So this is what, this is what it's going to cost and what they're going to do. And then you're going to hear later what they did do and what the accomplishments were.
My question, and that might be you, Miss Miller, who is a better source for this. The projections are optimistic, and as I understand it, we just pay a percentage of what actually comes in.
That's correct.
And so we're not, I mean, the city won't be on the hook if, in fact, these are overly obvious.
Okay, thank you.
Makes it easy to support.
Okay, is there any other questions or discussions? Thanks so much, Lisa and Janet and Kate for coming in. Oh, even though it's a presentation, I will ask for public comment, if anyone wanted to comment on this item. Seeing none, I will. Thanks very much. And move on to item two of new business, which is consideration to introduce and waive the first reading ordinance eight thirty-five, repealing and replacing chapter eight, point twelve, point oh nine oh to eight point twelve, point oh nine oh, regarding defensible space.
So before the chief gives her presentation, we're not going to ask you to take action this evening. And the reason for that is the enforcement and penalty provisions of this ordinance tied back to your Title I that you just went through today. So when we bring that back and have that set for introduction, which likely will be your next meeting, then we'll bring this back, because it can all tie together. But this ordinance can't go into effect until that, those provisions are enacted, so they need to run parallel. But we do want to have, we do want to present it tonight.
Okay, so this is introduction, and I said waive the first reading. Or is it just?
We'll just take it as a discussion item.
Okay.
Well, good evening, Mr. Mar, councilmember, member of the lovely. So, you know, this has been long in the making for me to bring back a few times of the counsel of defensible space, I've gone out and talked to the constituents. They had questions regarding it. And the first thing that I wanted to point out is the city does currently have an ordinance on file, and that is the one that I've been trying to repeal and replace, which is eight point two, point zero, one, zero to eight point one, two, zero, nine, zero. That ordinance was written back in nineteen eighty-five. And to date, talking with the city administrator and staff, there was never really any enforcement, and it's more restrictive for the residents of the City of Sonora than the Government Code section, which is actually state law and in effect. So as you know, when the city council looks at things to pass that are more restrictive than state law, they can do that, they just can't pass something less restrictive. So we already have something on the books that's more restrictive, but it's not practical. The ordinance reads now that if you have any land in the city, that you have to mow everything and cut everything down to four inches. It doesn't say anything defining shrubbery, things like water, landscaping, or anything. It also covers whether it's a small parcel, large parcel, it doesn't matter. So it's really hard to ask those homeowners in the city if they have a large parcel, fifty, twenty, a hundred acres, to go out and mow everything down to four inches. It hasn't been regularly enforced in the city, and they have fifteen days to, after notification of an inspection, to complete the work. If they don't, then the current ordinance says that the city will come in and complete the work for them, and if they do not pay the cost of doing that, then it will be a lien on the property. I've talked with the city administrator and staff, and that's not the work at the fire department that we can, what we want the city to go into is putting means on people's property. We want to educate them, let them know what tools are available out there to help prepare their house, prepare their lots for defensible space in case we have a lot of fire. So that's just a little history of the background of what our current ordinance is, which is more restrictive than state law. Now, the ordinance that I prepared for you today is actually based on the Government Code section, forty-two ninety-one, which is our defensible space in State California, Public Resource Code, I'm sorry, forty-two ninety-one in Government Code section, five one one seven five through five eleven eighty-nine. That is actually only adopted through the California Fire Code, it's a section in the Fire Code. So when you adopt the Fire Code, you automatically adopt that section for the defensible space. But we have a more restrictive ordinance that is what we would have to fall under. So I'd like to repeal the current ordinance and replace it with this Government Code section, which is state law, it's less restrictive, but actually goes into more detail of what defensible space actually is. That's zero to thirty feet right around a homeowner's house or dwelling structure, whatever they have on the property, and then thirty to one hundred feet or to the property line, cleaning up, limbing up, putting spacing between the fuels so that there's not ladder fuels to direct a fire and increase the intensity of a fire to someone's house. The only addition that I made to the ordinance for restriction is that the Government Code section and Public Resource Code does not have vacant lots. And we do have a significant number of vacant lots in the city. So after going out and talking with some constituents that either have large parcels or vacant lots, what I am proposing, and I want to make sure I'm in the correct area, actually happened in the discussion as well. But if you look at the second paragraph in the discussion, what it will do is, it defines that thirty feet to one hundred, or two, zero to thirty, to thirty to one hundred, and then also provide a ten-foot reduced fuel zone around the perimeter of a property line that borders a building, structure, dwelling, or egress area. So if someone has a hundred-acre parcel, it's not saying to go around the entire property line. It's saying if there is someone's house, some type of structure or dwelling, or it's an egress route for someone to get out, that they would put a fuel reduction zone in that area. So that is more restrictive than the Resource Code and the Government Section Code. But looking at the fires that we've had, especially the, you know, God forbid, if something happened like a campfire in paradise, that egress is extremely important. Not only does this protect the property owner that is providing that fuel, shaded fuel break area, because if there is a fire, a structure fire in that house dwelling on the other side of the property, this gives them a little bit of a buffer zone as well, and a safe area for firefighters to come and work so it doesn't spread to their vacant lot or their large parcel before it gets to their house. So what I've done is, when you read through the defensible space, I go through definitions first to, and this is right out of the Public Resource Code, Government Section Code, those definitions, it defines everything for someone so they can understand what's the difference between defensible space, which is that zero to thirty, and the reduced fuel zone, because those are two separate things, so it identifies that for people. And then it also goes into the requirements a little bit more in depth. So in eight point one, two, zero, one, two, on page four, the requirements of defensible space, what does that exactly entail? So it has those items listed out so people can understand what it means to limber up the tree under the base, what it means to remove ladder fuels, the spacing that's required. Also, you know, lets people know that if you have live vegetation, that doesn't have to be removed. If you have anything on landscaping or watering, it's allowed, you don't have to remove that. So it just goes into a little bit more detail for everyone to explain it. If we didn't put that in the ordinance, then we could just reference the Government Code section and the Public Resource Code, and we have to provide that anyway. We've made up pamphlets for that for the public that we've been utilizing so far. But like I said, the only addition to this is going to be that section of either a vacant lot or parcel that has a house, a structure, dwelling adjacent to it, or egress route, that they would have to provide that area. So it's not for the whole parcel or vacant lot. I'd be happy to entertain any questions.
Okay, any questions for Chief here to respond? Okay, any questions for Chief here to respond?
One, on page five, item number five. Cut dead or dying grass to a maximum of two inches.
Yeah, so what this is, is we want to remove the dead fuel, but we don't think that you'd have, you know, using a weed whacker that usually takes it down to about two inches. We don't expect someone to come in and scrape it down to bare soil. So if you do have that dead and dying grass, that would be reducing it down so that if a fire is coming through, it's not going to go anywhere in two-inch double. It's going to snake around a little bit, but it's not going to have a lot of fuel to come through.
So my concern is they do it when the grass is dead and dying and start a fire. Is there a timeframe where they shouldn't cut?
Well, you know, what we tell people is shouldn't be mowing dead grass with a lawn mower. That's not what it's intended for. So if you're on a dividing mower or a regular push lawn mower or self-propelled, it's not meant to cut dry grass. They're out trying to do the right thing just with the wrong tool. So when the grass does dry out, you can start when it's green. But we all know if you cut it when it's green, it's still going to grow back. And we don't want to create twice as much work for someone. So when the tops of the grass starts to turn brown, using a weed eater that has the Teflon or nylon string, that's the safest way to go out and make sure that your defensible space is good because it's not going to spark when it hits a rock or anything like that. It is a little bit more labor intensive, but that's the proper tools that you need to cut the grass that's dead on the property.
Do we specify that somewhere in the literature that we give to the homeowner?
In the education materials, we do, yes.
Okay.
Questions?
I would just like to say that, yeah, I think you've done a great job of addressing our concerns for our special needs. And I think it's a great document. Thank you.
All right.
And then the only thing the city administrator had to touch on is on page six on the back, the violations. We're trying to get everything more in line with what's going on in the city. So the review that you're having in your study sessions is the Title I. And we didn't want the city to have fifteen different things for violations or corrections. So once that was passed, it would follow me that ordinance as well.
Okay, any other questions for Chief New? Seeing none, public comment? Anyone like to speak on this item? Seeing no one, I'll bring it back. And do we need to continue this item or is it going to be re-adjourned?
No, re-adjourn it.
Item number three is consideration to adopt resolution number zero four dash fifteen dash two thousand nineteen dash A, adopting a list of projects for fiscal year two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty funded by Senate Bill One, the Road and Repair Accountability Act of two thousand seventeen.
So we've, the administrative services director has helped me with this staff report, but it includes the resolution that we're asking you to adopt this evening that would designate our available funds for this year to be dedicated to storm drain improvement projects, which are eligible activities under the SB one program. The, we expect to receive about seventy-seven thousand this fiscal year and eighty-one thousand next fiscal year. So our plan would also be to go back and re-appropriate the current year's funding, which was designated for overlay, it's also for storm drain improvements. Those estimated costs are in the order of two to three hundred thousand dollars. With the road funds don't have enough money to undertake those repairs. I did share with some of the council earlier that we did receive, the county has received a disaster declaration from the governor. And the governor has also requested that the president make a similar declaration. We were added into a long list of counties that were part of the designation in February, and there was eight additional counties that were added as of the twelfth of the month. So, and that information's in your mail downstairs. I don't, at this point, I don't know what all that means yet. I don't know what money we're going to get. Generally, with funds that are available from the state, there's still a twenty-five percent match on the local agency part. If there's a FEMA disaster declaration in funding, then that drops down to something less than ten percent. But that isn't a given and hasn't happened yet. And then there's the whole process of inspection and proving that the work was needed because of the storm drain damage, it's not repairs that were needed because of improper maintenance. So there's a whole process to go through before we're going to receive any money from the state or the feds. So the prudent thing I think to do is what we're asking you to do is, and that is to designate our current year's allocation for those repairs. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
The council may have.
I have one. So, Mr. Mayor, what other sources do we get dollars to help with the repair of roads?
We get highways user tax funds, which were some of the original gas tax measures. Those numbers are something around a hundred thousand dollars. Part of that goes to support the maintenance costs, the personnel costs associated with our public works department. So it leaves little for road repair work, so. But the exact numbers I don't have. I may not have to look them up in the budget. But, so unless and until we get state funding, we'll use the available street money that we have. And we're proposing to use the SB one funds that we have to try and cover those costs that were incurred because of the storm damage. So to the extent we've got to use other funds in the budget, we'll come back to you for a budget amendment.
Is there a possibility that if we do find other funding through the, from the state and the federal, that some of this money can be backed out and backed through street repairs?
We can go back into our account and reprogram the use of the funds.
Okay, yeah, I'm concerned about that part.
No, that's what we would do. I mean, to the extent that we get reimbursed for those expenses.
Okay. Any more questions for?
With the storm drains, we're talking about it here from all the damage that was done. What's the estimated cost?
So the estimate, based on a field review between the city engineer and the state OES representative for the Sunrise Hills work, was on the order magnitude of about two hundred thousand dollars. I haven't seen the bill yet for the main drain work, but I'm guessing it's somewhere between twenty-five and fifty thousand or more. That work is now complete, the area has just been repaid. And I should have by this Wednesday, so at least one, if not two proposals for the Sunrise Hills work. So I'll have a more exact price at that point. But we're still working on the initial estimates.
If the drains are not fixed, and I'm getting to a point on this, if the drains are not fixed, how much more damage will happen to various roads due to that?
Well, in that case, it's an outfall line that runs along the backside of commercially developed property. And the part of that bank's already washed away. It discharges into a creek, so there'd be sediment in the creek. And that would be a water quality violation that the city would be dealing with.
Okay.
And if you've had the opportunity to look at it, it's gone.
Yeah, and the pipe's missing.
Yeah. It went downstream, I guess.
Well, it's busted up in pieces down the slope.
Well, my biggest thing for asking these questions, it's all some things out there, just that the taxpayers, our constituents, understand that we're being biased with the money and essentially stopping what could happen later on. So that's my...
There'd be more issues down the road if you did.
Huge issues.
Good. Any other questions?
I was at a quick one. Is the street overlay project paving or striping or both or neither?
It's a pavement overlay that would include striping as the finish, whatever was needed. We still have our first year's allocation of something less than thirty thousand dollars that we're going to be using either with our own crews to do some centerline pavement, striping work. Yeah, for as much as that will cover, which isn't a lot. But we'll deal with the safety, some of the safety issues for the striping needs and some of the other pavement marking needs.
Okay, if there's no further questions for Mr. Miller, I'll open up to public comment. Does anyone like to speak on this item? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council for more discussion or motion.
Well, I'll let the motion to approve reservation number four dash fifteen dash two thousand nineteen dash A, that the city is required to develop to receive the city's fiscal year two thousand twenty SB one funding allocation.
Okay, so moved by council member Williams, second by council member Palmer to adopt resolution oh four dash fifteen dash two thousand nineteen A. Any further discussion? I'll call for a question or if you'd like to say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Seeing none, passes unanimously. All right, item J are monthly reports. We've received the monthly staff reports from the community development department, fire department, police department, and public works department. Is there any public comment? Seeing none, I'll go to the IDK, the Business Sonora Committee Report, which there is none. Item L, communications business license activity for the third quarter of fiscal year two thousand nineteen. Any comment on that?
I have a comment. I'm just going to ask a little bit before...
Yeah, we didn't do it this time. We will.
I would like to, I think it's important that the council know if these are new businesses or renewed business licenses.
I see one that definitely is renewed.
Yes, or a new owner even.
Anyway, any further, just any other comment? Any other comments?
Chris is listening this time.
Okay, Chris.
Okay, we'll move on to item N, which is council member and department head reports. And we'll start with council, well, we'll start it back. The administrative services director, Ms. DeGorski, any report? Fire chief New, is there any report? Can you, almost did it again. Community development director, Ms. Kellogg.
I just started to sleep real quick.
I keep trying to make you head of a county agency.
No, thank you. So I did want to let you know that we have continued work out at the Dr. Gold's Trail. For those of you, I don't know if you walk it, but if you do, we are now looking out on the summit trail. And we're doing again some fire suppression activities. Baseline has been out there. And they will be out there off and on for the next couple of weeks. Maybe they'll be moving out of here because by then they'll be able to get up in the high country and stuff. But we did do a lot of activities to do some suppression out of the trail. Someone will try something else.
Yay. Okay, police chief, Mr. Ben Wiel.
Yes, I'd like to make mention that this week, April fourteenth through twentieth, is National Public Safety Telecommunications Week. What that means is the time set aside to recognize our local police dispatchers. So, you know, they are the link between the community and fire and ambulance and police as well. All enforcement and do an incredible job for us. Our department alone has received over twenty-four hundred nine-one-one calls per year on average. And if you look at your monthly reports, you see how many per month. We regularly stay well above two thousand, just calls, just regular calls for service. So with that, we are going to recognize them on Wednesday at two P.M. with an ice cream social. And we have some gifts for them to present. And so I would invite you all, as well as city staff and whoever's left here in the community, can come by. We can't let all the public behind the doors become the counter. And thank the dispatcher for doing such a wonderful job. And tell on the chief that you get some ice cream too. Then you can have a scoop as well, as long as supplies last. So come by and help us celebrate our dispatchers.
Is this at the police station?
I'm sorry, yes, down at the police department, yes.
I have another question for the chief. I noticed that you've added something to your report, collision incidents. Is there a reason for that?
Yes, I thought of an important number to just at least be aware of. Because the number that we've been reporting is actually the collision investigations that we take, the actual reports. But there are many collisions that happen that we don't take an investigation report on. And many times, people get in a collision, there's no injury, no one's drunk, everyone's licensed. And the parties just would rather choose to exchange information. And that's just for your knowledge to see how many actually happen in the city. Because I don't think that investigations tell the truth, though.
Okay. City engineer, do you have anything?
Well, one thing I didn't mention, forty years ago, in the early eighties, the meetings used to start at eight. And go to eleven.
Oh, okay.
And they usually went to eleven, they had a cutoff at eleven.
Did anyone fall asleep?
City clerk Paul Vaughn used to take half the council out to seminars.
Yeah, I bet.
Yeah, exactly, that's, yeah.
And they already had dinner before they started at eight o'clock.
Okay, city administrator.
Nothing this evening, thank you.
Counselor.
Nothing tonight.
Council member Williams.
Okay, let's see. I attended the American Legion Post Fifty-Eight Celebration last Thursday night, which many of us were there. A great celebration for a great reason. I am going to attend the Vegas City's Legislative Action Day. I have to be in the secretary of the next day. So I'm going to participate in the Action Day as well.
Cool.
Just a couple, yes, executive committees and yes, partnership meetings. I attended the fire safety program that the county put on. And I attended one at the college on Saturday, learned some, a few things. I also attended the American Legion Post Fifty-Eight Dinner on the eleventh. I also have a question, and I don't know if this is where I'm supposed to ask this. But at the last meeting, Sharon Mary, which also mentioned the Mills Act, and asked if the city could consider participating in that. Is that something that we've considered and decided not to participate in? The county does, but there are tax breaks.
I don't know the history on that.
The Mills Act?
No, I know what the Mills Act is. I don't know what the city history is considering it.
Could we look into considering it?
We can...
I mean, it can offer tax breaks to city businesses with historic buildings. I think that we could, this downtown needs some help right now. That's it.
Mayor Protopa, Hawkins.
I guess a couple of things. One, I need to publicly thank the police department. Had a rabbit skunk on the property. And don't discharge firearm in the city, first of all. Call the police department so it can be documented. And they put the poor little thing out of its misery. So that was, I mean, it's sad, but it's reality we live in. So thank you to the police department, chief. Forty years ago, Jerry, my mother was throwing up, so I'll leave it at that. Because I keep teasing you about it. It's really an honor to work with you. You and I have got to sit down a lot and, you know, just go over things. Quite frankly, there's a lot in the city that your hands have touched, that you have went through and explained the history. You know, when I've had some issues of, you know, explaining or whatever, you've always been there. So I really appreciate that. So that's all I've got. So that's, that's all I've got.
Nothing?
Nothing.
That's a whole, what? That's an interesting, interesting analogy that you weren't even worn.
I was getting close. I was close. The Bee Gees were playing.
Just wanted to say, I attended the, my phone's not working, so I attended the TCTC meeting on Wednesday, and also attended the Post 58 Smith Walters 100th Centennial Celebration of the Post and of the American Legion on last Wednesday, and it's a really nice event. We have members in the audience, we have the commander in the audience, and we also have a member of the, our own police chief is a member of the board of directors, is that fair to say, or an officer anyway of the, of the post?
Member at large.
Member at large, okay. All right. As I've been told, just got told by the commander's wife, he's also in the audience. And I believe that is it, and we will see you next time.
No, no, closed session downstairs.
Oh, okay. Item N is adjourned into closed session. I forgot about those after. Is conference with legal counsel, anticipate litigation, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to government code section 54956-9E3. One claim, is there any public comment on the closed session item? Seeing none, we will adjourn in the closed session, and we will reconvene, we won't come up here.
We'll agenda it to reconvene downstairs.
We'll working downstairs if anyone's interested in staying. And there we are.
So you have to have.
Chief? It's usually.
For the dispatchers, what?
We've only got one more.